I'd like to call to order the City of Lake Forest District 67 budget hearing for September 24th, 2013. May I have a roll call, please, Madam Clerk? Present.
Present.
Here.
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 Thank you. I would like to introduce Jen Hermes to introduce the budget.
Thank you, Mr. Anderson. I'd like to welcome everyone to the 2013-2014 budget hearing for School District 67. We did briefly talk about the budget when it went on tentative display in July, but we'll cover a few more details here tonight. We're going to briefly just go through the legal requirements for budget adoption. We'll hit the budget highlights. I won't steal too much of the curriculum thunder that I think is coming later in the program, but just to pull out a few things. And then kind of a look at the numbers in both a narrative and then also in a graphical format. The budget must be adapted by the end of the first quarter of our fiscal year, so our fiscal year does start July 1, so therefore we must adopt a budget by the end of September. Prior to adoption, the school board must place it on display for at least 30 days, which we have done. Schedule a date and time for a public hearing, which we did at the July meeting, and then here's our hearing. And then publish in a newspaper of general circulation a notice of that public hearing, which has also been done. In talking to budget highlights, many of you had the opportunity to attend. We did go through a budget review committee in, I want to say it was May, don't quote me on the exact date, I won't say it, but where each department was able to come in and talk a little bit about what are some of the big highlights. We didn't go through the things that we do on a routine basis or the things that you would commonly expect, but what are some of the unusual things? You may hear, I think, some of these things in the presentation later today. From the curriculum area, Common Core standards, there were big changes in math, and you will see that throughout our budget. In particular, one of our larger expenses in curriculum this year was for the new Bridges Math Program, both in supplies and materials and securing those type of things. Also, the instructional support, we did add math coach at the elementary level and a part-time math coach at the middle school level to support that new math curriculum. Language arts, curriculum creation, also some curriculum mapping. Last year, we had in our budget the beginning to purchase some additional nonfiction materials with more rigor. That was continued in this year's budget as well. Professional development in the area specifically of persuasive and argumentative writing was also prevalent in this year's 13-14 budget. Science, major changes in science aligning the curriculum revision with the next generation science standards, again, providing some instructional support. Now, that may be with some consultant work, things of that nature. New programs and clubs, and I get really excited when I hear about these because Renee has been talking about them. That would be Principal DeBoer at the middle school. We have a new STEM class. In addition, robotics, Minecraft, and gamers' clubs. So hopefully, I'm not taking the cat out of the bag. These are either coming or have already arrived. So there's some pretty exciting things going on in the middle school level. And at the area of technology and 21st century skills, continuing development of integrated units. Again, we're going to continue our initiative to support teaching and learning in the area of technology with one-to-one devices. Now, we're through all four grades. Apple TV and expansion of the iPads at the elementary level. Building improvement, or capital projects as they may be called. Normally, you would see that we would have a list, four, five, six bigger projects going on at any given time. This year, we did PA speakers, and I say it like it's done because we do so many of the building work in the summer, so this is done. We did put in new PA speakers in all schools. That was for safety and security reasons, for, one, better able to communicate, but also to control the volume. We were receiving feedback from the schools that they couldn't hear some of our announcements, and that was a concern. So Carol White and her staff worked hard all summer to install new PA speakers. We also did some roof replacement work at Deerpath Middle School. And as you may recall, we do those in sections. Every single school has their roof pretty much mapped. We don't go through and, you know, replace an entire Deerpath roof at the same time. They're all monitored and determine when each section needs to be replaced. We deferred some capital projects in 13-14. One of the major examples of that is replacing some of the carpeting. We have a tremendous amount of carpeting left from the Project 2000, so if you think about carpeting, that is now 13 years old, really showing some wear and tear and needs to be replaced. What we'd like to do, what we did, is defer that from this year. And that doesn't mean that the project goes away or the idea goes away. It'll just be coupled with some other projects to not only address, I think, the replacement of the actual carpeting, but to take a look at our overall facilities. We've been talking about this in operations for probably the last, you know, 12 months. We think we're at the position now, the cube is finished, to take some of those ideas, look around our facilities, and determine what else needs to be done from a safety standpoint, what needs to be done on a general replacement cycle, like 13-year-old carpet that's seen better days. But also, too, some things that we've not been able to do the last few years just because we've held the safety items. That may include lighting, that may include casework, doors, carpeting, those type of things that maybe we can spruce up a little bit as we go forward. So we did hold back on those this year to couple them hopefully as a more comprehensive look at how we're going to address our facilities. All right, so we get to the numbers. All fund summary. So this is showcasing all of the required funds that were through Illinois State Board of Education, education, operation, maintenance, our debt service, transportation, IMR, which is Illinois Municipal Retirement, that is our support staff pension fund, capital projects, and working cash. We see that we do have a, revenues do exceed expenditures, which is fantastic. Last year, if you recall, we were just right at balance or slightly below. This does show that we're adding approximately $1.3 million to our fund balance this year. We did that with a 3.84% increase in revenues and a 4.81% decrease in expenditures. Now, there's a couple of things that are impacting this. On the revenue side, CPI that feeds into our largest revenue source for this particular year was 3%. Now, to put that in context, last year, the CPI was 1.4, and next year, the CPI is 1.8. So in the recent history, a 3% CPI is a good CPI. On the expense side, the deferred payments that I just spoke about recently lowered our overall expenses, but of course, those don't go away, like I said, so those will be carried forward into next year. Just wanted to dive a little bit deeper into the Ed Fund. The Ed Fund does have the greatest majority of all our funds, of both our number of transactions, but also the bulk of most of our expenses and revenue. Just a couple of highlights. As you can see, not surprisingly, our local revenue is our largest source of revenue. That comes in at 94%. 3% of our revenue comes in at the state level and 3% on federal. The majority of the state revenue is tied to grants and things of that nature, so they're of a specific purpose or a specific nature. They're not to be spent on general things. We do get a little bit of general state aid, but not a huge amount. All of our federal funding is tied to grants, so that, again, is specific purpose. You can see "other" is actually zero, so there is no "other." Those are our three main sources in the Ed Fund. The Ed Fund expenditures, again, we are very prescribed by the state by the categories that which we classify our expenditures, and they're in these main categories of salaries, employee benefits, professional services, supplies, capital outlay, other transfers, and tuition. As you can see, not surprisingly, we're a very labor-intensive industry. Our greatest asset is in our staff. Salaries and benefits in the Ed Fund do make up 77% of all of our expenditures. Now, if we were to break that down further, 81% of all those salaries are related to specifically our teaching staff. 11% is related to administrative staff, 5% clerical, and our tech staff, and 3% is our teaching assistants. Tuition, which seems like a little bit of a jump on the end, specifically, that is for our special education students who are either outplaced or receiving outplaced services. Just to finish up on some of the variables, in summary, I think overall, we're in a very strong financial position right now. The anxiety list, as some have called it through the years, is relatively light as compared to prior years. But keep in mind, this is a one-year view. This is on the budget and not the five years, so the anxiety list is a one-year anxiety list only. Enrollment in staffing right now is the area that I would think would have more heightened concern. We did have unexpected enrollment this fall and some late enrollment. Right now, based on some historical trends and information that we've been able to kind of research on, we have added staff to adjust for that added enrollment this fall, but I think we're going to be able to absorb all of that cost within our current budget. However, we're tight right now. So any additional adjustments or tweaks to staff as a result of either service needs or any additional enrollment or adjustments related to, most likely will result in a amendment to the budget at some future point. I'm really at the point in which I no longer think that we can absorb any more changes this year. Let's see. Professional development, I did notice I have gone back in to take a look at what I budgeted. We do budget salaries person by person, and then teachers have the opportunity to take professional development opportunities to move lanes through our salary schedule in both the fall and also at the end of the first semester. So I've gone in and analyzed our changes for fall, and I was a little surprised, pleasantly surprised, but we had quite a few teachers take advantage of professional development activities in classes and courses and moved to a new lane, greater than what I've seen in the last several years. So we'll keep an eye on that for the spring semester. Energy costs, everyone hope here, please, for a mild winter. This does make significant, if you think about your own home and whether or not you needed to run the heat or the air conditioning all year, multiply that by the size of our buildings and multiple buildings, and you can realize what the impact a great winter and a nice cool fall can have. So energy costs are variable. The tuition I mentioned for special ed students, we do budget that based on the students that we anticipate placement or that we know are placed. We typically do not build a cushion for one or two kids to come in or out of the program. These sometimes could be very expensive, and one or two children over the course of a year in a program or out will either give us a, you know, a nice buffer, or we will go in the red on that particular line item. We do utilize the board's monthly financial packet, the summary on that front page of those financials to let you know as we go through the year if we're experiencing any of these things or things that may hit the anxiety list. State revenue, state has been paying on time. And what I mean by on time is there only one behind at any given point, so that's on time for us. As you may recall, a couple of years ago, the state only paid two of our four categorical payments, so we basically got half of our state revenue in one year. The state caught one of those payments up last year, pleasantly surprised us on June 29th of this year, and now they have one outstanding, and we anticipate three current. So hopefully, four payments, but of course, still one behind. At this point, I will open it up. I'm happy to answer any questions from the board. And then just also a reminder that after the board's portion, we're welcome to take public comment on the budget.
Do board members have questions?
On the revenue and expense slide, you showed it, a million to the Betterment, to the capital fund. Was that the budget projected for this year, or was that the actual from last year?
This is this year's budget to budget. I mean, that's the budget revenue, that's the budgeted expense.
Gotcha. Thank you.
Under the education fund, there's a professional services, 2.8 million. What does that cover, professional services?
Professional services covers an assortment of things. It covers legal expenses. It covers payment for shared services for shared service staff that would be employed by the high school. It would cover consultants, any professional service that you can think of that you might go out and acquire.
On that, Mr. Fulker, one of the things that was explained at the Joint Shared Services is that it's actually a leasing agreement between one district and the other for shared service employees. That's why that number looks the size that it does.
Are there members of the public who would like to ask questions about the budget?
I don't think it personally.
You mentioned CPI difference between this year and next year.
Excuse me, would you mind going up to the podium and just introduce yourself? Thank you.
I'm Liz Olsen. You mentioned the CPI difference between this year and next year. What do you know, and how's that going to affect our budget?
Well, CPI, which is the basis of which our property taxes are calculated, what we can levy based on our part of that formula, is the December-over-December CPIU, so that's where it comes from on a national level. So what it's going to be for this December, we don't yet know. But it works a little bit behind. So we know next year's budget is based off last year's CPI, and consequently, therefore accordingly. What that means is this year, our revenue went up. We had the ability to levy up to 3% greater than we had the prior year. And then on top of that, we received new construction. So we, and the levy has not yet been set, so that would be at the November, the board will set a tentative levy, and they may choose to go up to the maximum amount by the CPI, or they may choose to do something different. But it will be a lower amount than last year, I mean, as the max.
A year ago, the CPI, Jennifer said earlier in the report, was 1.4%. This budget is based on a 3% CPI, and we already know next year's number, which will be 1.8. Next January, we'll know the number for the following year, and right now, the August-over-August number was 1.1. So I think what was communicated earlier is that this year, we saw a little spike. Based on the last couple of years and what we're seeing going forward, that 3% is kind of an anomaly right now in the current economy. And so that's part of the reason we're seeing that little disparity between the, or, you know, that gap between the revenues and the expenses, but it's going to come back down more in line next year. And at the same time, we're going to see our capital projects go up, so that gap's going to close.
If you may recall, when the economy first started to downturn, the CPI that we had to operate under that particular year was 1/10 of 1%, so it was virtually no increase.
Are there any other questions? Seeing none, may I have a motion to, thank you, Ms. Hermes, may I have a motion to adjourn the District 67 budget hearing?
So moved.
May I have a second?
Second.
A roll call, please.
Mr. Anderson?
Aye.
Mrs. Fisher?
Aye.
Mr. Schuler?
Aye.
Mrs. Clemenson?
Aye.
Mr. Borkowski?
Aye.
Mr. Lemke?
Aye.
Mr. Fulker?
Aye.
Motion carries.
I would now like to call to order the City of Lake Forest District 67 Board of Education meeting for September 24th, 2013. May I have a roll call, please, Madam Clerk?
Mr. Schuler?
Here.
Mr. Fulker?
Here.
Mrs. Clemenson?
Here.
Mrs. Fisher?
Here.
Mr. Lemke?
Here.
Mr. Borkowski?
Here.
Mr. Anderson?
Present.
We have a call.
The first item on the agenda is the President's Report, and good evening and welcome to what promises to be an exciting new school year. I'd like to single out two groups for special mention this evening. First, I'd like to welcome 145 members of the Deerpath Class of 2022 who started kindergarten this month. We wish you all the best of luck. Secondly, I'd like to welcome new families to our district, even, either those who have moved here recently or who are starting new kids in the district. We are very glad you're here, and thank you for entrusting your children to the district for their primary education. As we've mentioned previously, two of the most important functions of a school board are, one, developing a vision for the district and a plan for reaching that vision, and, two, providing an oversight function for the district so that taxpayers may have confidence that the district is being responsible with the funds with which it is entrusted. This evening, we have some important developments in both these areas. The board, along with the administration, will be launching a process to develop a new vision for the district. Board member Beth Clemenson will be working with Mike Simic to lead up this project. Later, I'm going to ask Beth to say something about this very important project. Both Beth and Mike have experience doing this in the past, Beth in the private sector and Mike in his previous school district. On oversight, we will be voting this evening on the creation of an audit committee and a compensation committee. Setting compensation and working with our auditors are at the heart of the financial oversight responsibility of the board. I believe that creating these committees will improve this process while also signaling to our community the board's commitment to transparency and oversight. That concludes the President's Report. Next item on the agenda is the Superintendent's Report. Mr. Simic.
Thank you, Mr. Anderson. There's a great deal of exciting news to report. As Mr. Anderson has mentioned, we've had a remarkable and, I'd say, call it trend-setting would be a nice thing to say, but certainly record-breaking number of new families that have chosen Lake Forest as their home and entrusted us with their children. We expected that our enrollment would be down about 125 students, and we've actually had a very modest decrease in our enrollment of 24 students. That meant that a white-hot housing market for many families moving in brought us a large influx of students that continue to roll in over the course of the summer, and that even continues now that the school year has begun. One of the, one of the things that struck me at the new parent orientation for the high school was where the new parents were coming from. About, there is a very large contingent of new parents at the high school as well, and as we went around the room asking them where they were from, it was, we moved from Great Britain, or Germany, or Finland, or Turkey, or beach park, exotic beach park in the panorama of places. So there's a wide range. About half of the folks that came were from overseas, interestingly enough. We also have, one of the things I wanted to mention, we've introduced some new administrators to the district, which has created their perception, but not the reality, that we have more administrators in our district than we had last year. And wanted to address that we're actually, in terms of our total administrators, we have some new faces, but what people don't see are the folks that have retired or gone on to other jobs. Dr. Julie Cooley is now in Las Vegas, and Joe Moline is in Southern Illinois. We miss them both dearly. They've, they have been replaced in some of their functions, but we're actually a half an administrator down this year from last year. So year-over-year, we're down a half an administrator, and the year-over-year cost of administrators in District 67 is down .81 as well, so almost 1% down from the prior year. The new folks who are doing a lot of great work, Lauren Fagel in curriculum, and Dr. Laurie Wilcox, and a wide range of things as well, including curriculum. One of the things that are, is most exciting to report, the large number of teachers that are signing up to participate in what are called academies, the learning opportunities for teachers, there's a very nominal benefit that they might receive, but this is really pretty much on their own time. And they offered one two weeks ago. There are 40 teachers that signed up. There's another one coming up. There are 20 signed up for that. And the topics of those things, the first one with 40 was on the new teacher evaluation. And the second one is related to some things that a researcher, John Hattie, talks about, and it's how to move the needle instructionally on kids. What practices that a teacher has create the greatest benefit to students. And what he, what he does is he studies, it's a meta-analysis, as he calls it. What of these practices are most effective? Well, the top three things, or three of the top things that he talks about are, oddly enough, self-reported grades from students. So students assigning themselves a grade on their work, that they have to understand what they're being measured by, and then say, this is how well I did against that. Oddly enough, that's the number one thing that moves the needle. Another one, very important, is response to intervention. Michelle Shen, Dr. Shen, is a national expert in that. And what that is, is a continuum of services for students to catch them or to catch them up. And so there are multi-tiers, as they say. Tier one is just regular instruction. Tier two is some support, and tier three is what we know as special ed. The other thing are formative assessments, and these are things that teachers typically did not do. We would call this dip-sticking. Hey, what do you already know about the topic before I begin teaching? And now that I've begun teaching, how are you learning what we're all trying to learn together? And have, there's no consequence associated with that. There's no grade associated with that, but it forms and informs the instruction. The other one, related to formative assessment, is feedback. And so what Dr. Wilcox is going to be working with our teachers on are just those very things. What is most effective and how to apply those in your classroom, so I'm very pleased to report on that. Very pleased to report how many of our teachers are signing up, and the positive impact that you both are having on our district already. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Simic. The next item on the agenda is public participation. Are there any members of the public who would like to address the board for any particular Seeing none. We next have reports and discussions. Mr. Simic.
Thank you, Mr. Anderson. We have a report from Lauren Fagel on the longest title in the free world, known as the Assistant Superintendent for Curriculum, Instruction, Technology, and Assessment. And Mrs. Fagel is going to let us know what is the scope of her work and why it's important.
Good evening. So the last thing we needed was another acronym, but since we work in education, we had to take advantage of the chance to create one, and the title that Mike so graciously created for me led us to the acronym CITA, so we call that CITA. And I've shared with you in a board workshop, the CITA team that I'm fortunate enough to work with, encompassing the district-level leadership in the areas of curriculum and instruction, technology, and assessment. So what you have in front of you is what we're calling the CITA update. And actually, this is something that will be distributed to all staff members in District 67 on a monthly basis. And the purpose of this is to centralize and streamline our communication to the staff, and so that they're all hearing the same message at the same time, and more importantly, building a common language. You'll see on the front page is a short blurb titled "Lesses More," and that was what I, with our team, decided would be the theme for this year. That does not mean we'll have less work. It just means that what we'd like to do, really in service to the teachers, is to take all of the high-quality curriculum work that's been done over this past several years, a lot of it was done this past a lot of it was done this past summer. Jen referenced the work with Common Core Language Arts, the preparation for a new math adoption, and the integration of next-generation science standards. Our goal this year is to take all of that work and bring it together into a comprehensive and efficient format that is accessible to parents, community members, students, and teachers. And so, that is the idea behind Less is More, that while we have a plethora of resources and documents, it can become a little bit overwhelming where teachers, really, teachers most of all need that, that one central place to say, "This is what I'm responsible for helping my students master in this given grade level." And one way of naming that is "learning targets." And there are lots of different phrases used in the world of education, instructional objectives, power standards, learning targets, key objectives. It really doesn't matter what you choose. What does matter is that you use the same language across the entire district. It's very, very helpful for everyone, but most of all, students, as they go from grade to grade, especially when they get to the middle school and go from teacher to teacher throughout their day, that common language, and then hopefully the common language around the skills, really makes their school experience more accessible. The common language around skills is where Common Core comes in. And starting this month, I'll be offering curriculum coffees, working with Ann Whipple, to plan those, both daytime and evening opportunities, for parents and community members to come and learn in an informal setting about curriculum. The hottest topic out there right now is Common Core, and so that'll be our first topic coming up in October. And giving parents a chance to view the standards, talk about them, and really see that what they are more than anything is a set of common language to describe the high-level thinking skills that we've wanted our students to master for decades. Being able to build a claim and support it with evidence, being able to read increasingly complex texts and comprehend them, being able to articulate an argument and defend it using a text. Those are phenomenal skills that I think we could say this district has always aspired to teach their students. What the Common Core gives us is that common language to use across classrooms, across disciplines, across districts, across communities, and in this case, across the country. On the second page is an update from our Director of Instructional Technology, Judy Epke. She is incredibly on top of it. Can't think of a better way to say it, but the transition to a one-to-one initiative is essentially complete at DPM. However, not everyone yet is using the Chromebooks, but I think what you'll see just from her first sentence is that "we have multiple devices and multiple settings," and that really is where educational technology is at. It's not about chasing a particular device because that device is going to change and improve by the time you get in the hands of every kid. So, Judy is particularly skilled at working with our technology coaches to help teachers figure out what is the best technology to use to help kids achieve this particular learning target. One of the neatest things I saw at the Deerpath East Open House was, and I'm not sure if anyone else saw it, but you could take the iPad and, kids had put a picture of themselves on their locker, and if the iPad scanned it, it activated a video of the student talking. So, parents could hear from their students based on the picture on their locker on the evening of open house. And I believe Amy Lambert, the tech coach, was showing this. It was the coolest thing. And for our tech coaches, that's like an everyday thing. So, technology is alive and well and moving quickly. And again, our focus is not unnecessarily which device is the end-all, be-all, but on which device is the best tool for our kids to achieve our desired learning goal. The next section on professional development follows up on what Mike was sharing. The response rate has been really, really gratifying for me and Lori as we've worked to plan these learning experiences based on teachers' expressed need. You'll see that people can teach academies both from within and outside our district. So, Lori is teaching two of them. Renee DeVore, our principal at the West Deerpath Midwest Campus, is teaching a book study on Ken O'Connor's book on grading. And Judy Lindgren, a retired principal from District 109, who worked in the district last year assisting with evaluation, will be teaching an academy. We will continue to assess teacher needs and develop these courses. They take a tremendous amount of time to plan for just a single hour or hour and a half, but those six to 10 hours of planning for that one productive hour where teachers leave feeling like they have something that they can use the next day in their classroom is well worth it. And then finally, we have an emotional wellness update from Rebecca Leifman, our Director of Emotional Wellness, featuring just two of the things that have been going on recently. Where Everybody Belongs, WEB, is our fifth-grade transition program. And what's neat about WEB is that it is the same overarching program as Link Crew at the high school. Both Link Crew and WEB are out of the same umbrella organization out of California. And so, this whole philosophy of using kids to help kids transition, more so really than having adults help them, is the same philosophy that we use as we transition kids from eighth to ninth grade. So, that was a really amazing event to watch. For me, I've seen it at the high school level, but I had not seen it at the middle school level, and she and her team did an outstanding job with that. Our First Day Teacher Institute in District 67 began with Building Champions. It was a four-hour in-service through the Flippin Group. I was very nervous about a four-hour presentation on opening day, but everyone said that this is the real deal, this is good stuff, this is something our teachers have been exposed to and have come back and said, "We're ready to see more." So, it was, I would call it a home run. Our speaker did an excellent job of keeping the staff engaged, and it really set the tone for the classroom environment that our teachers want to build. We have a large group going to Capturing Kids' Hearts, which is the three-day more intensive training through the Flippin Education Group, and that's taking place in October, and it's hosted at Croya. And again, that is a shared initiative between both districts. So, next month, in the October update, you'll see more updates from these people, but also we have our Director of Mandarin Immersion, Carolyn Crumis, and Colleen Brugman, our Director of Curriculum Integration, as well as Ann Dunn, our Director of Student Services, who also work as part of the CITA team. But in the theme of people really won't read much more than two or three pages, we're keeping things short each month to increase our readership. Any questions?
I'd like to comment. Thanks very much for offering us this different perspective that we're not used to seeing. We're not normally used to seeing things that go out to the staff.
Oh, yeah, right? I veered from the PowerPoint. Kornell practically hugged me when he learned that I had no technology to use.
Making your job easy.
Yeah, but yes, this will be going out to the staff. So, it's my pleasure.
Lauren, I just had a question. I've heard you talk before about sort of difference in curriculum philosophy between, like, trying to accelerate through, like, as much curriculum as possible versus slowing down and learning stuff, you know, to a deeper level and all. Could you just expand on that?
Sure. So, that's another, what I would call brilliant opportunity with the Common Core state standards, is if it does nothing else besides the common language I talked about, it gives teachers all over the country, and particularly in high-performing districts like ours, permission to let go of that need to cover, 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 cover. What the Common Core is saying is that it's more important to spend time going in-depth with these key lifelong learning skills than it is to focus on breadth and go faster and faster to cover this, because we think we've covered it, but we're not quite sure if the kids have learned it. And like what Mike was saying, if we want to have time to do that dip-sticking, as Lori refers to it, and checking to see if kids mastered it, and then not only checking, but having time to go back and reteach and intervene and support and scaffold so that they do master it, there is no way we can cover what used to be considered viable. And that's the phrase that you'll hear us use a lot, is a guaranteed and viable curriculum. Guaranteed is that every student is guaranteed access to our curriculum, not some students, not those who are necessarily more academically talented, or those who are struggling. Every student should be guaranteed access to the same level of rigor. Viable means it's doable, it's realistic, it's practical. We only have our kids in school for a certain amount of hours each day, and school is not their whole life, right? We want that balance piece. So, the Common Core gives us really permission across the country. It's a question of how ready schools and communities are to take advantage of that permission. It's scary. But we have to remember that, you know, everything our students will need to know in terms of content knowledge is literally in the palm of their hands with their phones, or will be, right? And soon enough, it'll be in a watch, and after that, it'll be probably in a chip implanted in our brains. But, so how is our best use of time with them? It's on the skills. It's the deeper, the more depth.
Either one of you, or Mike could answer this. How widely known is this in the community with the parents, and what kind of feedback are we getting?
With regard to Common Core?
Yeah, the Common Core and digging deeper, not wider, and it all makes such great sense, but I'm wondering what kind of feedback we're getting from the parents.
Well, I think that was one of the reasons why I developed the curriculum coffees, is because just in the short time I've been here, when I have talked about it, there's been a response of, "We need to hear more of this in more settings to more people." Unfortunately, I think there's a little bit of fear around it, like it's a national-directed, mandated curriculum, and it's nothing like that. It's an opportunity. So, I can't speak to-
It's almost the opposite, isn't it? I mean, it-
I see it that way.
There's more leeway to keep going with something-
Yes.
-as the teacher sees warranted versus you have to cover these things.
Right.
It seems the opposite to me.
It is. It is. But because it, yeah, I mean, it's, anything that's national will always come with its advantages and disadvantages, but I, my impression has been that there's a need and a want to hear more and to learn more. And so, hopefully, these coffees that I host, as well as other opportunities too, for parents to look at the standards, hear about them, talk about the upcoming assessments, will reduce the fear and increase the excitement, really. I get excited about it.
Lauren, thank you very much, and we just asked you to come back to the board before we implanted any chips in any of our-
I forgot these are televised, so maybe that wasn't the-
Thank you very much. A great report. Next on the agenda is Beth Clemmenson, who is going to talk about mission, vision, and goals for the district. Beth.
Thanks, Bill. I actually think this discussion follows nicely with what Lauren talked about. And as Bill mentioned, in his President's Report, setting the mission, vision, and goals for the district is really one of the most critical tasks for us as a board. And that would be true at really any point in time, but there are several forces that are converging right now that make this an ideal time to undertake a project of this nature. First, when we kind of look at the broader macro environment, as Lauren touched on, we see that the skills that our kids will need to be successful in the future are changing. The world around us is changing, and how we educate our children needs to evolve. So, as adults, we see this all the time. I mean, if we think about our own jobs, they're pretty different today than they were maybe just five or 10 years ago. And whether you're a doctor, or a lawyer, or a banker, or a college professor, we've all seen huge shifts in our respective marketplaces. Technology obviously plays a huge role in this. It's upending how we do our jobs. We now compete on a global stage, and competition's coming from really all kinds of new areas. And this is creating exponential change, and this rate of change is only going to accelerate in the future. And this is the working world that our kids are going to be a part of someday. Because of this, leading educational experts, like Tony Wagner from Harvard, or Sir Ken Robinson in the UK, just to name a couple of the more prominent voices, are looking at the skills that, you know, children are going to need moving forward. And they're saying that we need to take a fresh look at how we best prepare our children for this rapidly changing environment. And if you think about it, as Lauren just said, we all hold the power, a very powerful computer in our hand today, and we can very efficiently and effectively look up almost anything we want to know. And that's why folks like Tony Wagner are saying, which is something Renee DeVore has as a cornerstone of what she's preaching in her school, is the world doesn't care what you know, it cares about what you do with what you know. And so, we need to make sure that our kids not only know things, but are able to apply what we know in very meaningful ways. And we also know that this generation learns differently. I mean, they're just kind of wired differently. Those of us who are parents know this and see this. And so, we want to make sure that we're delivering our curriculum, our strong, rigorous curriculum, in a way that's engaging and culturally relevant to them. So, while all of this is going on in the macro level, at the very same time, we see there's major changes, as we just heard, going on in the national and state level. I mean, we're talking about Common Core, and we're trying to understand the new assessment tools and what they're going to look like. We know teachers are now being evaluated on a regular basis, and we've learned about the Danielson framework this past year and what good teaching looks like. So, a lot's happening. So, luckily, we have many amazing, hard-working administrators and teachers that are busy digesting all of this new legislation, ensuring that we're not only checking our boxes to comply with the new state laws, but we're going beyond to ensure that our curriculum lives up to the standards that we've come to expect in Lake Forest. And lastly, the third factor is that we really have a very new team in place. I mean, there's a saying that says that if you have one new team member, you have an entirely new team. Well, we have four new board members. We have a new superintendent, we have a new assistant superintendent, we have a new curriculum director, we have several new principals and assistant and principals in place. And so, by any definition, we have a new team at District 67. And it's vitally important that we ensure that this team is all headed in the same direction, that we share together with our teachers a common sense of purpose as we move forward. And so, for all of these reasons, we're embarking on this broad initiative to identify and develop a strategic plan for our future, to set a course in motion for the next five to seven years. Now, we're in the very early stages of this work, and I'm not exactly sure what it's going to look like when it's all put together with a bow on top, but we do know a couple of things. First, we know it will involve all of our stakeholders, our teachers, our parents, our administrators, and the board. And I hope I can count on all of you to play a role in this process in the coming months. Second, we know we want to look broadly at the best practices from around the corner and around the globe to ensure that we're holding ourselves to the highest possible standards. Our kids deserve the very best, and Lake Forest has a history of innovation and a passion for quality, and this project will only serve to reinforce that. And third, while this task is challenging, because as we keep hearing, there's just a lot going on, I'm personally very optimistic about the future at our schools, and I'm, because I'm confident in our school leadership at the very top with Mr. Simic and the strong team that he's been assembling. We are so fortunate that we have folks here that get it, who are looking at all of this and are more than up for the challenge to move forward. And so, while we are in the early processes, the process, early process of this project, I hope this gives you some of the whys behind why we're doing this initiative. I think it's really exciting work, and I look forward to sharing it with my fellow board members and with all of our stakeholders in the community.
Thank you very much, Beth. Mike, do you have a comment?
Yeah, I'm very pleased to. I've been really, really pleased and impressed with the energy and the intelligence with which Mrs. Clemmenson has engaged in this work, and she brings a great deal of resources with her from a very rich background at Kraft. I learned a couple of things about the brand Minute Rice that I didn't know before, that genuinely re-energized a, what was a failing brand, and has brought a real, strong interest and passion for this kind of work to this, to this new team. It's been both fun and challenging, working with you already on this. And I think, as she has said, this is really, really fun work. And strongly encourage everyone that can, that has time available to participate in it, if you haven't done this kind of thing. Watching a product evolve over time, that is, that is shared, and that is very important to all of us. And one of the things we heard from our new families is that each of them moved here because of the school district. That was the number-one reason that they relocated to Lake Forest. They chose us very intentionally. So, this is an organization that people care very deeply about, that matters to their children and also to their property values. But the process of shaping where the district goes is- But the process of shaping where the district goes is very open-ended. It is iterative. That means that it changes over time. And it's very gratifying, satisfying, and energizing to watch that take place. So, alrighty, I can say thank you for your work to this point, but look forward to moving that, moving things forward in the coming weeks.
Thank you very much. We now come to Board Committee Reports. The first is Education Committee. Chairman is Leslie Fisher. Leslie?
Thank you, Bill, and thank you, Beth, for your report. The Education Committee met on Tuesday, September 17th, right here in West Campus, from 8:15 to 5:00 after 10:00 a.m. And as we talk about all of the new faces and people coming into new roles, we had a lot of change go on within the Education Committee. I myself remain there, but we do have new Board of Education members representing the committee. Many thanks to Rick Schuler and Bill Anderson for their service in the past year. But at this meeting, we welcomed incoming Education Committee members, Beth Clemmenson and Jeff Fulker. So I want to thank them in advance for joining. In addition, we have two new community members, Lorraine Grieve and Sridhar Krishnaswamy. Already, we're offering wonderful suggestions and being part of a very productive conversation. Again, we also had Lauren Fagel and Lori Wilcox, two new faces, joining us and giving us plenty of information. Mike Simic was also there, and Mike Burkowski chose to attend. Thank you for that. And we also had community member Patrick Pat attend. We discussed a few things during this time. First on the agenda was LASIC, which a lot of people have heard of. It's a language acquisition committee. This is a short-term committee comprised of parents and teachers, Board of Education members and administrators that are meeting monthly. This began in August. And they are meeting to revisit the language program within the district with the ultimate goal to make a recommendation to the superintendent regarding the reshaping of world language learning in District 67. Lauren Fagel reviewed the September meeting, including the process being used by the committee, which is being led by outside facilitator Dale Truding. October, in the, excuse me, at the October meeting, language expert Tara Fortune will offer data regarding language programs throughout the country. The recommendation to Superintendent Simic is expected in December or January. And the Education Committee members offered valuable input regarding Mandarin immersion program, need for data, and other factors related to the LASIC committee. Excuse me. We also discussed the math program. Thanks very much. We also discussed the math program going on throughout this school year, 2013, 2014. Bridges is new program to grades one through four. It was already in place in kindergarten. Agile Mind, I say, is newer to five through eight. We've seen it six through eight past year or so, and now it's broadening to five through eight. Lori Wilcox is leading staff development, as Lauren touched on, regarding scope and sequence of high-quality math curriculum to improve implementation protocols, offer various forms of additional support to teachers and students that ensure understanding and mastery of skills. In addition, we discussed the Common Core state standards. Already discussed several times here this evening. And my feeling is they will be discussed at every meeting you attend within the next year. The objective is to go deep, as Lauren already went over tonight. Not wide, no race to cover at all. This may be the last year of the ISOT, and it is a probable transition year to the PARC assessment for next year. During public participation, guest Patrick Pat commended board members and the superintendent on hiring Lauren and Lori. And he presented committee members with a report by the Equity and Excellence Commission entitled For Each and Every Child. The Education Committee will next meet again Tuesday, November 19th at 8:15 here at West Campus Seminar A. And agenda items include STEM discussion and articulation of the charge of the committee. Guests are welcome and encouraged. Thank you very much. And before I conclude, I would like to ask Beth and/or Jeff if they have anything to add from the committee meeting. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Leslie. The next report is the Joint Shared Services Committee. Jeff Fulker?
Thank you, Bill. The Joint Shared Services Committee met yesterday evening, September 23rd, here at the West Campus. It was open to the public. Present from District 67 were committee members Bill Anderson and myself. For District 115, the representatives on that committee are Todd Bergner, the Board President, and Dick Block. And both were in attendance. Also at the meeting were Mike Simic, Jennifer Hermes, and Alan Albus from the Administration, and our District Attorney, Mike Hernandez. As this was the first meeting of the JSSC since the new boards were installed, Mr. Hernandez used it as an opportunity to present an overview of shared services in Illinois and provide some history as to how our shared services agreement has developed, and how it fits today into Illinois law and the Illinois Constitution. He also presented some recent legislation and how it impacts, or in some cases does not impact, our current shared services agreement. We also took the opportunity to affirm that the purpose of this committee is to provide a forum for discussion, a forum to discuss areas of cooperation between District 67 and 115, including administrative cost savings, operational efficiencies, and curriculum coordination. It was agreed that the JSSC has no ability on its own to make decisions, spend money, or undertake any action without the approval of both boards. There were some action items. The JSSC asked Mr. Hernandez to review our current shared service agreement, which was last put in place in 2006, and to update it to reflect changes in Illinois law, as well as changes which the boards feel are important to reflect the current status of shared services in the community. Once a draft of this update has been completed, the committee, the committee will review the agreement and report back to both boards for further discussion and consideration. Bill, do you have anything you'd like to add?
No, thank you very much, Jeff. The next report is Finance and Operations, Rick Schuler.
Thanks, Bill. Finance and Operations met on September 19th at 8:00 a.m. We welcomed two new board members as well, Rob Lentke and Mike Burkowski. Thank you for joining us and your early contributions. I look forward to working with you guys. I think you're going to add a lot. We also welcomed two new community members, Richard Chun and Paul Darling. They're not here, but we welcome them as well. The first item discussed was with respect to the four special service areas in the Lake Forest community. In sum, we looked at the origin of these special assessments and the appropriateness of them on an ongoing basis. Further discussion will be had on these assessments. The next topic, which we spent a lot of time on, was an overview of the tax cap. In 1991, a little history, and I don't mean to bore you with history, but it's quite important to our budgeting process. In 1991, a limit was imposed on the amount that property taxes can be increased on an annual basis. In sum, it's limited to the lesser of 5% or the CPI index. Practically speaking, Alan, correct me if I'm wrong, but almost every year, it's the CPI is the limiting factor. The purpose of the tax cap is to control and limit growth of property taxes. I think something that we can all understand and appreciate. The practical result of that is actually not a limit on expenses, as people may think, but de facto, it's a limit on expenses. You can't grow your expenses faster than your revenues unless you're the state of Illinois or the federal government. I guess you can. The big point of going over the tax cap is to really highlight how important the five-year budget is, the five-year planning process. It's of utmost importance. And I say this, I make this observation as it highlights one of my few talents, and that is, I'm a master of the obvious. The budgeting process is probably the most important thing, at least within the Operations and Finance Committee, that we can do for our district. So as obvious as it is, I think it's worth noting and discussing. To reiterate, regardless, or to put it differently, regardless of student growth, regardless of the conditions of our buildings, regardless of our ideas and plans for new education ideas, we can only grow expenses at the rate of CPI index. Some, that may be 1%, that may be 2%. On average, over a 20-year period, it's probably 2.5%. That's not much. Again, unless we want to run up the debt, deplete our cash reserves, run down our facilities, or sacrifice our education programs, we have to live, we have to limit our expenses to this level. The board, along with the administration, must plan carefully and constantly make trade-offs to stay within this limitation. Again, I get back to the five-year budget, which I credit Alan and Jennifer with. It's done with meticulous detail. And it's really not just, it goes even beyond the numbers. It's the process. And it's the discussions that come out of the budget that really make an impact. And in fact, that's why we combined recently the Operations Committee with the Finance Committee. Because it's, it's a back-and-forth process. It's an iterative process. It's a process of trade-offs. There are a lot of wants and needs. There are certain things that have to be done. And all this really gets discussed by looking at the numbers in their budget. The next item that we discussed was the history of the CPI. I will not get into that at all, as exciting as it was. We'll skip over that. We also spent more time on the fiscal year 2014 budget. Jennifer, I think you more than adequately went through that, so we'll skip over that as well. I did make a note, though, I want to highlight one key statistic. And that is, we budget by the end of the 2014 year, a reserve of around $6 million. We give this a lot of consideration. A lot of back and forth on what is the right amount of reserves. I take it very seriously. I'm a banker by trade, I'm conservative by trade. To put, $6 million has to be put into perspective. Our cost budget is about $38 million, or $36 million, or somewhere in that range. $6 million represents 15% of our annual costs. That puts it a little bit into perspective. But not completely. I think we've given a fair amount of discussion to the fact that since 2000, we really haven't had a concerted effort to really catch up on deferred maintenance and be proactive with some capital expenditures to upgrade our buildings. That's been 13 years. So although it's been two years since we ran a deficit, and we've got a positive operating surplus the last two years, I personally am glad to see a little more contribution to the surplus. And that's leading into, I think, the next five years, where we're going to spend a lot more time on catching up on deferred maintenance and being more proactive with our facilities, as we were at DPM recently, converting the library into a much more functional space. I don't mean to ramble on about this, but just one more thought on the reserves and what's the right amount. I'll give you analogy, a banking analogy, unfortunately. You can look at a bank, you can look at their capital levels. It's called loan-loss reserves. And you can look at two banks, and they could have the exact same loan-loss reserve. A high level of reserves for a bank may be 2% or 3%. That means nothing to most people. But the point is, two banks could have, say, 2.5% in reserves and be completely different, completely different risk perspectives. What really matters are the numbers behind the calculations. You know, are loans properly marked? Are they categorized? You know, is interest really current, or are you, you know, padding the numbers? If, if the numbers behind the reserves good, then, then you can look at it and make a fair comparison. Going back to the school example, I'm comfortable with 15%. I think it's a good level. I think most people on the committee agree with that and the board. But we do have to, in fact, you could make the argument it's too high, that maybe we shouldn't run, we shouldn't have run a surplus the last two years. Maybe we could run that down to 10%. But the backdrop of all this is, we haven't made a concerted effort to really catch up on deferred maintenance and upgrade our facilities in 13 years. On top of that, as we've heard all night, we have a lot of initiatives on the education side that probably, or could cost more than the CPI index would allow us to, to pay. The next item that we discussed was the implementation of PMA's Financial Planning Program. Again, with respect to the five-year budget, our model was internally developed. And because it offered greater flexibility in running various scenarios, we stuck with that. When I say internally developed, I mean by Alan and Jennifer. However, in recent years, with advances in web-based computing, the PMA model now provides several advantages over our internal model. Some of these advantages include more graphics, increased reporting capabilities, the ability to compare various scenarios and go back to the original scenario without having to remember what you changed, better alignment to our annual financial report. And I added one other item that I think Mike and I thought was particularly important. By using a third-party model, we get more rigorous, ongoing corrections, experimentation, updates. Because so many others are using it, there are other people developing it, we're looking at it. You know, if anything's not working right, you have a lot of eyes looking at it in addition to year two, or year four eyes and ours. The cost of this goes from, I guess monetarily, zero to $8,500 a year. But as I say that, it does free up the opportunity cost of some of your time. So I hadn't thought of that till now, but I think the true cost is probably even less than $8,500 a year. The consensus was that it's well worth it and money well spent. The next item discussed were the goals specifically for the Operations and Finance Committee, specifically to Alan and Jennifer. We limited, or they limited it to three goals. The first being, or relating to the five-year projection, maintaining a five-year financial projection and investigate, and investigate conversion to the web-based system. Enough said on that. The second goal revolves around identifying new revenue sources and identifying ways to save on expenses. Definitely a worthy goal. Third, take a more concerted look at capital projects, again, what we referred to. The last item discussed was a summary of the summer projects, the capital maintenance items that were accomplished over the past summer. And I have a list of that here somewhere. Cherokee sound abatement was completed. The PA speakers have been installed in all classrooms in all buildings, as we discussed. The renovation of the floor in the receiving department was completed. Roof replacement at the DPM was completed. Tile abatement and carpet installation at Cherokee, hurrah, done. New soffits and fascia. A leak in the basement was found at Everett. That was nipped in the bud. There was a crack in the foundation that was repaired, so that should be taken care of. 382 work orders, 172 preventative maintenance items. And last but not least, new cool water dispensers, I think five of them at DPM, which I thought was good to get rid of those older. They're not relying on those old rusty drinking fountains. That is the extent of my report. Rob or Mike, anything to add?
I thought it was perfect.
Thank you very much for that report. And just to clarify, we have no specific knowledge that there was rust in the drinking fountains. And thanks, as always, to Alan and Jen for their terrific work on the finance, finance team. The next report is the Policy Committee. Mr. Mike Burkowski?
Thanks, Bill. The Board Policy Committee has met twice since our last board meeting. On September 12th at 9:30, the Policy Committee met for a working session. Present were Jeff Fulker and myself. The purpose of this meeting was to review the existing committee charters and define the purpose of the new committees, which we'll discuss later tonight. the purpose of the new committees, which we'll discuss later tonight. The finance and operations committee and the education committee each have existing charters, and in both cases, some updates are needed. The committee chairs for each of these committees, Rick and Leslie, will receive more on this, more on this separately from this report. The policy committee also needs a charter to be drafted, which Jeff and I will create. We then discussed the purpose and the composition of the audit committee and the compensation committee, which are two committees we will be discussing and voting on later in this meeting. We've developed draft purpose statements for these two committees. We also discussed potential benefits and potential concerns related to the creation of these committees. These purpose statements, as well as the benefits and concerns, will be shared in more detail when these committees come up for vote later in this meeting. This meeting adjourned at 10:45 a.m. On September 18th at 8:30, a joint policy committee meeting was held in conjunction with District 115. Present were Jeff Volker, Nikki Snoblin, Ted Mormon, Mike Simic, Andy Hendrickson, Alan Albis, Jen Hermes, Eileen Fowler, and myself. At this meeting, the group discussed a number of proposed policy changes, which are called press items. These are proposed changes sent to us by the Illinois Association of School Boards, which are issued to include legislative changes. They're issued in batches. At this meeting, we discussed press issue number 81 and 82, which contained about 20 policy updates. Some of these proposed policy changes are very minor, including such things as updating legal references to existing policies, while other are more substantial, such as developing a new bring-your-own-technology policy. The administrative team had reviewed each proposed policy change and presented their views on each of the policies. For each proposed policy change, we either agreed to adopt the proposed change, agreed to rewrite, or decided not to adopt the proposed change. The result of this process is that these policy updates will be presented to this board for a vote later tonight, assuming that we waive the first reading, which we are permitted to do in this case. All of these proposed updates, which we'll vote on later, were unanimously agreed upon by all present at the meeting. This meeting adjourned at 9:10 a.m. That concludes the policy committee report. I would ask if Jeff Volker, fellow policy committee member, had anything to add, as well as if any board member or the member of the public has any questions.
Not at this time. Seeing none, thank you, Mike, for that report. The next report is on the youth summit, which Mr. Burkowski attended, and ask him to report on that.
Thanks, Bill. Last week, a youth summit was held, providing an opportunity for a large group of youths to discuss some of the challenges they face. I was privileged to be part of that day, serving as a facilitator. Rebecca Leifman from District 67 also participated. This is the third year this event has been put on, hosted by LEED in partnership with all of the local schools. A community readout was held later that night, where the youth had a chance to tell the community about their thoughts and proposed solutions. I asked Bill if I could have a few minutes tonight to share what occurred that day, with the hope that we can have some of these students present their progress at a future board meeting. Thanks for allowing that, Bill. Approximately 100 eighth graders attended the youth summit, including about 40 from DPM, as well as students from Lake Bluff Middle School, St. Mary's, Lake Forest Country Day, and Lake Forest Montessori. After an energizing keynote speaker, the youth then split into small groups. They first discussed what some of the best things about our community are, and it's great to know that they absolutely do understand that Lake Forest is a special place to live. They noted the community being safe, friendly, and having amazing resources, including a great beach, as some of the positives. They did not mention schools at this point. They then discussed in some detail some of the challenges they face. Ultimately, the challenges were categorized and prioritized, with five major categories coming to the forefront. The five major categories of their challenges were, number one, school stress, which they defined as stress occurring as a result of attending school, largely related to the quantity of homework. Number two, bullying. This included physical bullying, mental bullying, and cyberbullying. This topic was especially timely in the wake of the 12-year-old seventh grader who committed suicide in Florida a few days earlier, which was directly as a result of cyberbullying. The third category was living in the bully, in the bubble, which means growing up in Lake Forest isn't always reality, and it presents its own set of challenges to our youth. Fourth category was social pressures, including acceptance, navigating cliques, and peers being judgmental. And the fifth category was family drama, which included parents putting too much pressure on kids to perform academically, sibling issues, and other family issues. The afternoon was spent discussing these five categories, with the youth being challenged to develop their own impact plans, identifying projects which might help these challenging situations. I won't go through each proposed project, but I want to mention two that I think are relevant to our group. The school stress group largely focused on the homework issue. One of their proposed ideas was doing research on other areas of the world where homework is less emphasized, but excellent education is still achieved. They mentioned Finland as an example. And then they proposed that they present to the Board of Education their findings, with the hope that if we were better informed, the policies and practices might change. And I, in all sincerity, do not believe that any of them had any idea that a Board of Ed member was in their midst all day. The bullying group proposed holding an anti-bullying day, complete with speakers, peers giving testimonials, book discussions, and more. It was a very powerful day, hearing the youth bare their souls, sharing their fears, and admitting their weaknesses. I think that too often, we think everything's okay, or bullying isn't an issue in our schools. Hearing kids say that they want to take responsibility for researching the value or lack thereof of homework was fantastic. They weren't dumping these issues into the laps of adults, but rather, they were trying to be part of the solution. While the day was fantastic and the youth were amazing, the real challenge now begins, both for the youth that attended and for the community as a whole. As was noted that day, this was the third year the youth summit has been held, and the issues have been strikingly similar each year. The key to this kind of event is for it to achieve lasting and sustainable impact, for actual community-wide change to occur as a result of it. The different schools, including DPM, have committed to facilitate follow-up sessions with the youth in order to support the youth in their efforts and to provide resources so that sustainable results can occur. Rebecca Leifman from 67 has already started that process with our students, and we hopefully will hear from them directly in the coming months. I want to encourage my fellow board members, the administration, the staff, and all parents to proactively ask the youth for their thoughts on these issues, whether they attended the youth summit or not, and for us to look for ways to support them in every possible way, for us to proactively look for our own solutions while they try to find their solutions. Some of these issues are very much school-related, while others are not. We should do all we can to listen to what the youth have said and to do what we can to make a positive impact. Thank you for allowing me to share a little today, and I look forward to hearing more from the students in the future.
Thank you very much for that report. Do any board members have comments, or?
Is the youth summit, is the youth summit, is it led by LEED? That's sort of an odd way. Is it led by LEED?
LEED is the primary host of it and coordinates it and pays to some extent. There's also sponsors. The last two years, Northwestern Lake Forest Hospital was a major sponsor. It's very much done in conjunction with all of the schools. This year, it was held at Croya. The keynote speaker is an individual from Youth to Youth International, which is a nationwide youth wellness-type program. So LEED hosts it, coordinates it, but brings in the right people, the experts, to really facilitate it.
I just want to thank you for the report. I did attend the youth summit last year, and I just found it so remarkable how articulate and mature these eighth graders were in talking about kind of some of the struggles they go through. And I think this is perfect output to really be another piece of the puzzle as we do the mission and vision moving forward. So thanks for, for bringing that to us.
Good. Thank you very-
Please do bring them back. It'd be great to hear from them. That's the most fun part of these meetings.
Thank you very much, Mr. Burkowski. We, we now move to committees for whom, through which board members serve as liaison on. The first one is NSED, and our liaison is Mr. Mike Burkowski. Mike?
Let's keep on going. The NSED governing board last met on August 29th. I was unable to attend this meeting. However, I have met separately with Tim Thomas, the superintendent of NSED, as well as Dr. Jean Sophie, the superintendent of Lake Bluff District 65. The purpose of the meeting with Dr. Sophie was to better understand the shared priorities between District 67 and 65. Dr. Sophie is also a member of the NSED executive board and is familiar with the current structure of NSED and the desired state which our districts share. She also has a wealth of experience with special ed co-ops, including helping other special ed co-ops go through a similar transformation that is being discussed with NSED. Both District 65 and 67 share a desire for NSED to shift from having higher membership fees and lower pay-as-you-go fees, which has been the historical structure, towards a structure of lower membership fees and more pay-as-you-go fees. I separately met with Tim Thomas, superintendent of NSED. We reviewed the structure of NSED, as well as the services that member districts, including our district, receive from NSED. These services include, and these are things that we typically are doing, sending students to the North Shore Academy School, having NSED classrooms in our own school buildings, providing direct services, such as occupational therapists to our students in our buildings, professional development, and the sharing of the NSED superintendent, who has a specific certification required for special ed by the state of Illinois. Tim and I also reviewed the history of NSED and District 67, including our giving notice to potentially leave NSED about two years ago. One result of that action was movement from NSED towards more of a pay-as-you-go fee structure and reduction in the membership fee. I reiterated to Tim that we hope to continue to see more progress on that structure, as we believe it provides a more equitable structure to all member districts in NSED. Finally, I've requested from NSED a summary sheet, clearly showing the fees that District 67 has paid to NSED during the last academic year and the services we received. I will share that with all when I receive it, as well compare it to our own internal perspective on the same question from our administrative team. As well, Tim has offered to attend a future board meeting to provide better understanding of the costs, if that's something we decide that we'd like to do. The next NSED governing board meeting is scheduled for October 9th. That concludes the NSED board liaison report.
Mike, thank you very much for that report. Are there any comments or questions?
Personally speaking, that would be very helpful, to have Tim come here and explain to us in detail. That would be-
Very good, thanks. I'll, I'll make that happen.
The next liaison report is Ed Redd, and there is no report this month. The next report is the curriculum coordinating committee, Ms. Leslie Fisher.
There is no report this month, thank you.
The next liaison report is the Spirit of 67 Foundation, Ms. Leslie Fisher.
The Spirit of 67 Foundation, for those of you who are not aware, and I know our audience today, most are aware, but for those of you at home who may not be aware, the Spirit of 67 is the fundraising arm for District 67. So all of the monies that are raised by the Spirit of 67 go directly back into the classrooms to enhance our children's experiences. And most of this is done through grants that are awarded in the spring. And the Spirit of 67 does this, well, really in two ways. They coordinate two very large events, one that is upcoming and upcoming very shortly. And that is the Fall Luncheon. And the Fall Luncheon, held at Exmoore Country Club once again, is being held October 18th from 10:30 to 2:30 p.m. I have attended for the past few years and will be attending once again. It is a very enjoyable afternoon. I encourage all to attend and to support our schools. Later on in the year, they are the hosts of the Home Tour, which occurs in May. And an additional way in which they raise funds is to ask people simply to support the spirit. And it was interesting, at this first meeting of the new year, run by new President Martha Zeeman, they were very complimentary and grateful to the administration, because in the registration packets that went out to all the families, there was a green sheet that stuck out like a green sore thumb, and it said, please, support the spirit. So they have as much money from supporters, just from donations, as of now, as they had throughout all of last year, in fact, more, merely from donations. And on top of that, of course, they will raise additional funds through the two big events that they host throughout the year, and additional donations that come in. So on behalf of the spirit, thank you to the administration. I know you've heard that. It's very much appreciated. And again, I will be attending Spirit of 67 meetings on a monthly basis, and I look forward to being a part of it. Thank you.
Thank you, Leslie. That concludes reports which are on the agenda. Are there any other reports in which board members would like to, which board members would like to make?
So if I could, one item that is missing from our agenda that I would perhaps like to be added on is the APT monthly meetings, which I am going to be attending as, again, the liaison, very similar to the role I play at Spirit of 67 Foundation, I'm going to be attending the monthly APT executive board meetings. The APT, of course, is the Association of Parents and Teachers. As I previously mentioned, the Spirit of 67 is our fundraising arm. Well, they work hand-in-hand with the APT, who really just runs the volunteers. So the money comes through the spirit, and the volunteers come from the APT. And both organizations do a great job of working together. The incoming president, now our new president for executive APT, is Allison CK. She discussed in this first meeting of the new year that the theme of the year, which historically every APT executive board president selects, is balance. And I know it's something we all strive for in our own lives, in our student lives, and in the lives of community members as a whole. And one of the interesting things, if you ever want to be in a room and hear discussion of what is going on in your schools, the APT meetings are the place to be. I know for those of you, and many of us, attend them regularly here, you know that. Mike Simic spoke, of course, and one of the surprisingly thing, surprising things he shared was that 127 new families have joined our district. We were expecting enrollment to be down, is not the case. So we've welcomed a lot of new families. And one of the roles of the APTs by school is that they welcome each new family. They welcome each new family with a sign, with a phone call, with a coffee. So these are sort of the things that go on within the APT. You may not see every day, but they're going on every day. And I've always felt that the presence of APT volunteers directly enhances the culture of all of our buildings. And grateful to all of them. So again, I will be attending the APT executive board meetings on a monthly basis, and I am grateful to the board members on this board, who are going to be attending building APT meetings, to share with those groups of people, the work of the board, a lot of the things that are going to be going on this year. So thanks to them in advance. Thank you.
Thank you, Leslie, and to all the APT volunteers who do such terrific work. Any other reports? Seeing or hearing none. We now move to adoption of various items, the first being the 2013, 2014 budget. Mr. Simic?
Thank you, Mr. Anderson, and I'd like to look to Mrs. Hermes for this.
We did cover it in more detail earlier today, but I just want to bring a couple of things to your attention. What we are officially approving today is the state form. It's kind of a real spreadsheet-y-looking mandated type of form. But we also do provide a, a district version of the exact same budget that we use internally, and then also have it built on our website for people to look at the budget in a little bit different manner. One thing I need to highlight for you is, although the original cover memo said that there was no changes to the tentative budget, that is true, but there was a $640 change I made to a grant after, after I printed the state form, but before I printed this form. So it is out of wobble between the two by $640. That was amended this afternoon, and that is what you have in your packet tonight, is we had a grant change. So I changed the state form by $640. The other difference I want to highlight is the state form includes approximately $4.5 million of what they call state-on-behalf payments. Those are a pass-through on our state budget form. You can see that on, on the first couple of pages. We do not include that in our district version, because we don't ever see that money, and it's the, basically the promise the state has made to pay on behalf of our teachers into the pension system. So we don't recognize that through our books in any manner. So, we don't recognize that through our books in any manner.
Thank you, Ms. Hermes. Are there any other comments or questions from board members?
I just want to clarify one thing. The number that you presented earlier was a little over 37 million, correct? For revenue? For this anticipated revenue? That's different than what we talked about last night, which was, Alan, which was around 35 million, right? So, my... Okay. I just, we talked last night about the numbers on Brittany's sheet versus what we'd received being around 35,212,000. And then now it's... Okay. So, the 37 includes the transfers, which the other number did not. Okay. I just wanted to clarify that because I didn't know which number to use the first time, and now, thank you.
Other questions or comments? Hearing none. May I have a motion to adopt the 2013-2013 and '14 budget?
So moved.
May I have a second?
Second.
May I have a roll call vote? Madam Clerk.
Mrs. Clemmensen?
Aye.
Mr. Lemke?
Aye.
Mr. Anderson?
Aye.
Mr. Fulker?
Aye.
Mr. Borkowski?
Aye.
Mr. Schuler?
Aye.
Mrs. Fisher?
Aye.
Motion carries.
The next item on the agenda is the approval of the Siemens contract renewal. Mr. Simic?
Thank you, Mr. Anderson. This is not Mr. Simic on the action item here, so the Siemens contract, like, this is Mr. Alvis, I believe, correct?
In your packet is a memo from Carol White, and I'll briefly summarize it for the people in the audience and for the camera. It's in regard to the renewal of the Siemens Service Agreement contract for District 67. In all four of our buildings, we have Siemens controls on the HVAC systems. These are pretty sophisticated systems. They allow us to monitor remotely, turn them on and off, but also check during weather events to make sure things are operating correctly. The service agreement program includes monthly onsite visits from a Siemens technician to do a review of the current use of the HVAC system, to make sure that they're operating correctly, to provide training to district staff as needed or required. It's also an agreement for 24-hour emergency onsite response to reduce downtime. So, when the systems fail, we don't want pipes freezing and disruptions in that regard. It includes software maintenance, continual data backup and data recovery, software support and updates, and annual maintenance of the system. As Carol states in her memo, she feels that this program has been worthwhile and on numerous occasions has saved us money because sometimes they'll spot problems before they fail or before there's a disruption in service. So, she's recommending approval. There's no increase to the cost, which is $40,712 annually, and that would be each of the next three years.
Questions from board members? Hearing none. May I have a motion to approve the Siemens contract renewal?
So moved.
May I have a second?
Second.
May I have a roll call vote? Madam Clerk.
Borowski?
Aye.
Mr. Lemke?
Aye.
Mrs. Clemmensen?
Aye.
Mr. Anderson?
Aye.
Mrs. Fisher?
Aye.
Mr. Schuler?
Aye.
Mr. Fulker?
Aye.
Motion carries.
The next item on the agenda is the approval of a financial planning program agreement. Mr. Simic?
Thank you, Mr. Anderson, and I'd like to briefly make a comment about the good fortune that we have with Mr. Alvis and Mrs. Hermes. We're accustomed to working with these guys on a daily basis, and we don't necessarily recognize that they're two of the leaders in their field and are represented, they represent our district, our community, and statewide organizations, and are looked to as people across the state as the most capable and most skilled in their respective areas. And one of the evidences of that is the financial planning program that they created on their own and improved over a period of years that has now grown, and they recognize this beyond... There's a product out there that finally does what they had created on their own. One of the things is the product from the same company provides the administration and the Board of Education comparative data that is the envy of every business operator, I think. And that is the ability to go out and get data, comparison data, for position after position around our region, so we know who our comparables are. I've never seen anything close to that, and that's something that they found on their own and then brought to the district, and that provides a really rich and meaningful data set for the Board of Education or the administrators to make decisions with. So, this is the extension of another one of the PMA programs that is up for approval tonight. And again, we're accustomed to seeing this kind of data. Other school districts simply don't have that. So, when we want to hire an assistant principal or a principal, we can go out and grab data from everywhere around us and say, "Okay, what do other people in this position make around us?" We can find that. It's, we take that quite easily for granted. So, with that, Ms. Hermes and Mr. Alvis.
Thank you. Over 100 districts utilize the PMA product, and it has been stated, we didn't migrate. It's been a very good product for a number of years, but one of the reasons we hesitated to migrate to it is to run different scenarios in the past. You used to have to contact the company, and then they would, they would run them and PDF them out to you. We built a model so that we could do that on our own. But with cloud-based computing now, we have the ability, once the base models are built, to run those scenarios onsite. And so, now that product has surpassed what we're capable of doing. The product cost is $8,500. That amount is far below bid thresholds, and the fact that it's software, it doesn't require it to be bid anyway. The $8,500 is far below our policy amounts for purchases, but this is unique in the sense that there is a consulting agreement that goes along with purchasing the software. That's because there's about 40 to 50 hours of PMA staff time that goes into mining the data from state submittals that we do. But then in addition to that, taking our salary schedule that we'll provide them and building it into the model, what's called a scattergram, kind of where our staff is along that matrix, factoring in our retirees, our insurance plan data, our insurance plan enrollment information, staff attrition assumptions that we use, new higher cost assumptions, CPI, interest rates, new construction, state revenue, and enrollment assumptions. Because all those things are components of our five-year plans. And they sit down with us and go through that, build the base model. Then the advantage is, what Mr. Schuler talked about, the fact that there's so many eyes looking at it, we often worry, because we run scenarios and change formulas, that if we get it wrong, or if we forget to change it back, then you take that, you extrapolate it out over five years, that can, that can have a big impact. That's reduced in a model like this. The other thing is, once you get that base model built, and the committee didn't even get to see it in its full extent, it's when you start running other assumptions, what if CPI changes to this, and interest rates go up or go down, and enrollment changes, all those things get color-coded as you change those assumptions. So that, once you have a base model and you start running variations off of it, you can see it a lot easier, and it's a lot more visual. So, it has surpassed what we're capable of doing, and it's only been the last couple of years that, with the cloud computing, that it's gotten there. So, we really think it's worth the investment. It's something we're migrating, or would like to migrate both districts to, slightly different format than what we use, but we'll adjust to that as well. So, what you're really, what we're asking you to approve tonight is really the consulting agreement that goes along with it. And the reason we submitted that is because the consulting agreement covers the scope of services, the limitations, which basically say, the product, the end product is based on the assumptions we provide. So, that's, so we can't go back to PMA and say, "Well, the economy was a lot worse, it's your fault." It's all based on the assumptions we use. There's an indemnification and confidentiality agreement in there. So, that's why it's being submitted.
To clarify, it's a one-year contract?
It is a one-year contract.
Questions from board members?
Is there an estimate of, so we would have to pay consulting fees to PMA every time they run a model for us and we change our assumptions? Is that correct?
No, $8,500 is all in.
Sorry, it's all?
That covers the consulting.
Forty to fifty.
It's everything.
Okay.
But it's every year, to be clear.
Yeah, but it's...
It's software, but we pay for it every year, but the consulting...
But the $8,500 includes any of the back office or consulting? Okay. Thank you.
But the contract says they'll charge 175 per hour.
If you, if you ask for special reports or something above and beyond the base model, I don't anticipate us doing that.
And this is all for us, not 115?
This is all for us. This is not really an opportunity to combine and share costs because they are unique. You know, it's based on our budget, our staff, our contracts, our insurance plans. And the high school is the same thing. So, they are really two separate model, same software, but different scenarios for each district.
Hearing no more questions. May I have a motion to approve the Financial Planning Program Agreement?
So moved.
May I have a second?
Second.
May I have a roll call vote? Madam Clerk.
Mr. Lemke?
Aye.
Mr. Borowski?
Aye.
Mr. Schuler?
Aye.
Mrs. Clemmensen?
Aye.
Mr. Anderson?
Aye.
Mrs. Fisher?
Aye.
Mr. Fulker?
Aye.
Motion carries.
The next item on the agenda, approval of Board Policy 2.150 update, second reading. For to introduce this discussion, I would call on Mr. Borowski, who is chairman of the Policy Committee. Mike?
Great, thanks, Bill. First, I'd like to, if you agree, I'd like to split this into two separate votes. One is adding the Audit Committee, and secondly is adding the Compensation Committee. It's one policy, but it's really two different issues we're talking about. So, let's start with the Audit Committee. It's updating Section 2.150. We had the first reading at our last board meeting, and tonight would be the second board meeting. Jeff and I met and discussed sort of a high-level purpose for this committee, just to give some context for the board of what we're talking about. That's not meant to replace the committee charter, the goals or objectives, which the committee chair would need to take care of. The purpose of the Audit Committee of the District 67 Board of Education shall be to assist and advise the board regarding its responsibility for oversight in the following areas, District 67's overall systems and internal control and risk mitigation, the integrity of District 67's financial statements, compliance with District 67 legal and regulatory requirements and ethical standards, but most importantly, the independence and performance of District 67 accounting firm. The committee shall consist of at least two board members of the Board of Education as determined by the board president. My own thoughts, I support the creation of this committee. A critical purpose of this committee is for the board to have its own independent relationship with our auditors. One of the board's most significant reasons for existence is to provide oversight, the financial oversight, and having this independent relationship with the auditors is an important part of this job. And this committee will really take a large step towards the board having that relationship. Jeff, you might want to add comments and others?
Yeah, thank you, Mike. I had initial concerns relative to redundancy of this committee versus the Finance and Ops Committee, since this is, could be seen as a subcommittee of that. But in further discussions and looking at what other districts do as well, I support the addition of an Audit Committee to provide a deeper dive, particularly as it, particularly means a relationship that we have with our auditors, in creating a sustainable and more meaningful relationship with those folks as part of our oversight responsibilities. So, I support that as well.
Other discussion from the board?
I would just chime in, you know, we have a terrific finance team here, and this really isn't about, it should never be thought of as being about the finance team not doing their job. This is about us doing our job, and it's an important function we have for oversight. I think it helps us do that.
Is the estimation of the additional fees we will incur?
I don't think there'll be any additional fees. Bill, you might want to speak to that.
In theory, if we spent more time with the auditors, would they charge us for it? It's possible, but I think that would require a lot more time. So, we wouldn't anticipate any additional...
Yeah, I did ask him that question in anticipation that it might come up. No, it's similar to coming out and talking to finance or, you know, meaning to go over a few things. Now, if you said, "Hey, we'd like to meet you every month," probably going to see an additional fee, but just on a regular or infrequent basis, I think they're fine.
Excellent. Excellent question. Other questions from board members?
Madam Clerk, can we have a roll call, please? I guess we need a motion.
Was there a motion?
May I have a motion to, I think, I'm not an expert in Robert's rules of order, but we're sort of splitting this into two motions. So, the first would be to update Board Policy 2.150 to, a second reading for the creation of an Audit Committee. May I have a roll call vote?
I move we adopt the Audit Committee.
Second.
Okay. May I have a roll call vote? Madam Clerk.
Mr. Fulker?
Aye.
Mr. Schuler?
Aye.
Mrs. Clemmensen?
Aye.
Mrs. Fisher?
Aye.
Mr. Lemke?
Aye.
Mr. Borowski?
Aye.
Mr. Anderson?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Mr. Borowski?
So, the second committee, again, under Section 2.150, standing committees, is to, is to discuss and vote on the addition of a Compensation Committee. The purpose of the Compensation Committee would be to assist and advise the board regarding its responsibility for oversight of District 67 Compensation and Benefit Program. Again, the chair of that committee would further define the purpose and the goals. My own thoughts is that I support the creation of this committee. I think this committee would serve a valuable research and advisory function to the board, providing a board perspective on compensation issues that we don't currently necessarily have. I think that this committee would also provide a good forum and a more proactive defined process for board members to raise issues of concerns related to compensation. I think it's better than our current structure, which to some degree is trying to raise these issues at the same time that we're being asked to vote on salary adjustments. It also provides the administration some direction which can be beneficial. Having said that, we've had some excellent spirited conversation among board members on the creation of this committee, and while the value of the committee was recognized, other board members raised very legitimate questions and concerns about it. So, I would encourage everyone to weigh in on the creation of this committee.
Yes, Mike, I have some concerns relative to this committee, not so much in the philosophy of having additional oversight over compensation, per se, or a better understanding of how compensation policy and philosophy is developed. My concern is, again, one of them was the potential added cost. That's been addressed somewhat tonight with the adoption of PMA. It sounds like they'll have the database and the information that would help a committee or anyone get a better understanding of compensation relative to peer organizations, peer districts, and so forth, which is very helpful. I'm not sure I see the need for a full-time committee. I know that on occasion, we need to delve further into compensation and understanding its impact on budgets and on new hires, but I'm not sure that's something we need a full-time committee for. And then lastly, I do see a Compensation Committee, depending upon the breadth of its scope or the depth of its scope, perhaps, potentially creating a conflict within the administration relative to who owns compensation philosophy and strategy. And I would hate for the board to take a position that may be slightly outside of our reach and create any conflict with the administration as a result, based on how they feel they need to administer salaries, administer compensation to attract the best people, and us having a different philosophy as a board. I just, that concerns me as a potential unnecessary conflict and potentially us going outside of our reach. So, I'm philosophically agreement that we need to understand compensation better, but I don't see the need for a full-time committee.
I thank Mr. Fulker for those comments, and I think they're very well, very well taken and reflects concerns that I have as well. I've always thought of this committee as something that would really be policy-based and research-based. I really fundamentally don't believe that the board should be meddling in decisions of individual, individual salaries. But I think Mr. Borowski is correct that sometimes having a philosophy in place could help board members and give them some content... having a philosophy in place could help board members and give them some context when they're making these decisions. I don't, we don't anticipate that a consultant would be needed. We have some experience working with the district, very successfully doing the superintendent search, and I think we did terrific work. We actually had a Compensation Committee for that search and didn't require any outside, any outside help, and again, got terrific assistance from the, from the, from, from the district. I'll just mention one other thing that's unusually complex for our district. Shared Services Compensation is a continually sort of complex issue, and I think there are concepts about compensation within shared services that could be better delineated, and that would be something that the committee could, could work on.
Bill, can I suggest that we defer the vote on this? I, I will add that, as Mike knows, I've been a proponent of this for probably two, two and a half years, but upon more reflection and discussion with some of the other members, I think there are other ways to address the philosophical issues that we have with it without having a Compensation Committee, and I don't think we've had that full discussion. In other words, I think we can accomplish our goals, but possibly in a better, more inclusive way than having a subcommittee make these decisions that probably are in the hands, should be in the hands of a broader group and, and not directly in the board's at all.
That's fine with me if the board wants. I suppose we can do a couple of things. We could just agree to table it, or we could vote on it and see if people want to do it now or, or wait. I'm sorry?
It's a process question. If we feel, if we feel that improvements can be made, I'm, I'm for tabling, it's fine.
Yeah. I, I think if there's enough concern about whether this is the right way to do it, why don't we wait? So why don't we have a motion to table it? Is that what we do? Yeah. And then we'll take it up at some future date. So may I have a motion to table approval of Board Policy two-point-one-five-oh, the second part, which was for creating a Compensation Committee?
So moved.
Second?
Yes, second, second. May I have a roll call vote? Madam Clerk.
Mr. Fulker?
Aye.
Mr. Schuler?
Aye.
Mr. Clemmison? I'm sorry, Mrs. Clemmison, I beg your pardon.
Aye.
Mrs. Fisher?
Aye.
Mr. Lemke?
Aye.
Mr. Burkowski?
Aye.
Mr. Anderson?
Aye.
At least I didn't call any of the men misses, so that's good.
Okay, the next item is approval of press issues eighty-one and eighty-two policy updates, first reading, Mr. Simic.
Thank you, Mr. Anderson and Mr. Burkowski. Would you care to speak to this? I've spoken enough, you do it. I recommend that the press issues are things that come from the Illinois Association of School Boards. Most states do not have this luxury. It's really quite a nice service to have policies that are vetted through the School Board Association that are then presented to districts, and districts can then accept them, modify them within certain parameters, or reject them altogether. In this case, there are a number of changes that, that were, were made to policies. Many of them are just changes to citations within the policies, but I recommend, I suggest that these be passed as presented.
I would agree with everything that Mike just said. We went through them, the policy committee vetted each and every one of them, and we agreed with unanimously the administration stance.
All right. Okay, so we are going to propose waiving the first reading and passing these on the second reading. So may I have a motion to waive the first reading of press issues eighty-one and eighty-two policy updates?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
May I have a roll call vote? Madam Clerk.
Mrs. Fisher?
Aye.
Mr. Lemke?
Aye.
Mr. Anderson?
Aye.
Mr. Fulker?
Aye.
Mr. Burkowski?
Aye.
Mr. Schuler?
Aye.
Mrs. Clemmison?
Aye.
Motion carries.
All right. First reading. May I have a motion to approve the ISP Press Issue eighty-one and eighty-two policy updates second reading, as discussed in the policy meeting on September eighteenth?
So moved.
May I have a second?
Second.
May I have a roll call vote? Madam Clerk.
Mr. Burkowski?
Aye.
Mr. Lemke?
Aye.
Mrs. Clemmison?
Aye.
Mr. Anderson?
Aye.
Mrs. Fisher?
Aye.
Mr. Schuler?
Aye.
Mr. Fulker?
Aye.
Motion carries.
The next item is adoption of Finance and Operational Goals. Mr. Simic.
Thank you, Mr. Anderson, and have the Finance and Operations Vision Statements and Goals have gone through committee? And Mr. Schuler, would you like to speak to these?
Actually, I think I went through all three of them earlier, so I won't repeat myself.
I recommend that these vision statements and goals be approved as presented.
Comments, questions from board members? May I have a motion to approve the adoption of Finance and Operations Goals as presented?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
May I have a roll call vote? Madam Clerk.
Mr. Schuler?
Aye.
Mr. Fulker?
Aye.
Mrs. Clemmison?
Aye.
Mrs. Fisher?
Aye.
Mr. Lemke?
Aye.
Mr. Burkowski?
Aye.
Mr. Anderson?
Aye.
Motion carries.
The next item on the agenda, approval of Human Resources Report. Mr. Simic?
Thank you, Mr. Anderson. I recommend the Human Resources Agenda be approved as presented.
May I have a motion to approve, excuse me, discussion or comment from board members? Hearing none. May I have a motion to approve the Human Resources Report as presented?
So moved.
May I have a second?
Second.
May I have a roll call vote? Madam Clerk.
Mrs. Clemmison?
Aye.
Mr. Lemke?
Aye.
Mr. Anderson?
Aye.
Mr. Fulker?
Aye.
Mr. Burkowski?
Aye.
Mr. Schuler?
Aye.
Mrs. Fisher?
Aye.
Motion carries.
The next item is approval of Consent Agenda Items. Are there any items on the Consent Agenda that board members would like removed for further discussion? Hearing none. Mr. Simic.
Thank you, Mr. Anderson. I recommend the Consent Agenda be approved as presented.
May I have a motion to approve the Consent Agenda Items as presented?
So moved.
May I have a second?
Second.
Roll call vote, please, Madam Clerk.
Mr. Burkowski?
Aye.
Mr. Lemke?
Aye.
Mrs. Clemmison?
Aye.
Mr. Anderson?
Aye.
Mrs. Fisher?
Aye.
Mr. Schuler?
Aye.
Mr. Fulker?
Aye.
Motion carries.
We had ten FOIA requests for District Sixty-seven from Karen Cates, one from Ms. Nancy Thorne, nine. Announcements, Monday, October fourteenth is Columbus Day. School will be closed. The next District Sixty-seven Board of Education meeting is scheduled for October twenty-second at seven PM, Lake Forest West Campus in the boardroom. The next item on the agenda is adjournment. May I have a motion to adjourn the meeting of the Lake Forest District Sixty-seven Board of Education?
So moved.
May I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Hearing none. The meeting is adjourned.